Go ahead and tell the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. It's Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, about nine AM. My name's Don Swanker. We have Nin to my right, Mike to my left. Bjorn, oh, you're not there yet, are you? Are we recording? Okay, we got going for nineteen, checking to make sure he's working, and Lisa from the auditors, laying in the back, and first up is Jaden Shekel.
Morning. First on the agenda is a couple of utility permits. The first one is for McCoqueta Valley. It's an underground fiber as well as three-phase power on one fifty-fifth Avenue and one hundred and fifty-ninth Street. So on one hundred and fifty-fifth Avenue is the underground three-phase. That will actually occur outside of our right-of-way. It will cross underneath one hundred and fiftieth Street or E seventeen. But then it'll turn and go east on one hundred and fifty-ninth Street, and that's where it'll be in our right-of-way. And that will be the underground fiber. And due to the rock outcroppings and everything out there, I met with McCoqueta Valley, they are requesting to put it underneath our gravel road. And I reached out or I talked to Rick about it, his thoughts and other counties. Other counties do allow it. Lots, other counties, actually, there are some that prefer it to be underneath the road, so that way they know where it's at. And in this, we have allowed it under the shoulders before, and that's where this would be. It's a gravel road, so it'd be in the shoulder part of the gravel road. But just given the rock in the ditch and everywhere, since it's bluffs sticking out, I don't see an issue with it. It's a road that we are going to be reclaiming this summer, so I'm gonna have them work with, coordinate their work with Rick, so that way we can work together. Add it whether they want, we prefer them do it ahead of our reclaim, or if we'd rather wait till then to install it after.
Are they boring it or knifing it in, or how deep?
It'll be trench or plowing it in. Yep, and they might, they're gonna have to make some rock cuts in it, because some of the road itself is actually on bluff, so they're gonna have to saw into the rock itself. But where they're able to, they're gonna plow it in. We require it to be thirty-six inches, and they've stayed down there. That's what it will be.
You say under the road, you're talking about vertically, I mean, along the road, or what do you mean by under, just on my right-of-way? We had done right-of-way before.
So it'll be under the driving surface, running parallel with the road, essentially in your drive lane, under the shoulder.
Yeah, on the shoulder, not under the road.
Well, it'd be.
They're not crossing the road and going under?
Correct, on one hundred and fifty-ninth Street, they're running parallel with it.
On one hundred and fifty-ninth, yeah.
Do you know where the, it's off of E seventeen? Or just north of E seventeen, you know, where the Southern Cemetery is? It's the gravel road that runs east-west, just north of the Southern Cemetery.
You're aware of that, I suppose?
Yes, yeah, I talked to Rick and stipulation, I've talked, also, I've talked with McCoqueta Valley, stipulation will be they work with our department on it, and they're required. Our permit does allow them, and there are exceptions where they are allowed to go underneath our roadway, and there are certain requirements for them when they do that. They have to supply the rock for the trench, like six inches of rock at the top, the trench off in the road. So basically, they're required to re-rock what they tear up as far as the trench utility or trench installation goes.
I would second.
We got a motion by Nin, second by Mike, to approve the right-of-way utility permits from McCoqueta Valley Electric on Farmers Creek Township, section fourteen fifteen, for one fifty-fifth Avenue and one fifty-ninth Street, underground fiber and three-phase power. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next one from McCoqueta Valley is a lot simpler. It's aerial, replacing aerial fiber optic on existing poles. This is along D fifty-five, three hundred and twentieth Street, just north or east of Lamont. So just replacing fiber on existing poles, so pretty straightforward, so we recommend approval on this one as well.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin, to approve McCoqueta Valley Electric Cooperative overhead aerial work in Tate DeMortes Township, section twenty-five and thirty-two thirtieth or three-twentieth Street and two ninety-sixth Avenue. Any other discussion? Go ahead and take role, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
While we're talking about fiberization, I got, and I got a question on the bridge on two hundred and sixteenth Avenue.
Oh, once they get replaced?
As I've been told, that the fiber is attached to the bridge.
There is an old one, yes. I've actually updated or sent all the information to utility companies that are in that project area about our plans, so they'll have to relocate. There is a fiber that was on the, that ran, there was a conduit that ran on the curve of the bridge. And that was the same with the day labor last year, actually. It's now, mine now, it's been abandoned, and they now run underneath the bridge. But they've, either way, they're gonna have to relocate.
They have, they have to do that, okay.
And they've been notified, so shouldn't be an issue too, because I think they're all actually our local utilities.
They know our timeframe and they know what, yeah, okay, that's all my question was, because I need to enter it.
Oh, yeah, I just sent the email out yesterday, so.
Yep.
Because they have till, I mean, the bridge technically won't start till September at the earliest, so they got time.
Good.
Last is a joint agreement, so for our maintenance work that we are gonna be doing in the city of Monmouth on Division Street. If you recall, I talked to the city of Monmouth about if they wanted to do their portion of the, outside of the travel lanes, the, what was it? One point, the on-street parking, they want to get that milled and overlaid as part of the project. They stated yes. We sent out the quotes to contractors, got them back. River City was our low. And we had it broken up into divisions. What is our portion and what would be the city's portion? From that, we got the city's cost, and I gave them, drafted an agreement between them for them to basically repay. We will, when the work is done, we will pay for it out of our project, and then we will get, they will reimburse us for their, what is done. And that's what this agreement states, gave them all the contractor's information as far as their pricing. They approved it last week for their, they approved their portion of the permit or agreement last week at their city council.
What kind of timeframe they got to pay this back?
Uh, it's just one, I just have it as one payment, so.
And what kind of timeframe?
After we submit it for, so once the project is complete, they have to do like a, no different with our DOT, once you an inspection done on it or a walk-through to verify if there's any punch lists that need to be completed. Once those are either remedied, or if there is none, they are notified the project is complete, and they have oh. I mean, essentially, it is with written notice, so conduct its own inspection within ten days of receiving notice. So it's due.
So it is exactly that, or don't carry on or?
Correct, it'll, it's due upon completion.
Okay, so was that qualified, were they still be in line for our KCP, probably?
Yep, so that's what, this was gonna be their submittal or their RCTP.
So they're prepared for that, they?
Yes, yep, and I gave them the documents they needed to submit to ECIA as part of that, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
So whether they actually submitted or not, I don't know, but that was their intent. This is just a great.
I mean, that's a good, you know, I mean, it's.
Well, yeah, this agreement's just for them to reimburse us for paying for portion of the work that will occur outside of the travel lanes on their city on-street parking areas.
And just kind of make their main street a uniform width.
Correct, because otherwise, if they didn't, we would just do our twenty-foot-wide traveled way through there, and you'd leave whatever it is, six and a half feet on each side of broken-up asphalt just.
You have an estimate on their cost?
It's, uh, actually more than estimate, it's what? It is twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Is total project or their part?
Just their part.
Okay.
Because there's some curb replacement as well that has to be done as part of that, which is included in that. The project as a whole was, I want to say around one hundred and seventy-one thousand, so ours is one hundred and fifty or one hundred and forty-some thousand.
Do you need a motion for us to approve that agreement?
Yes, yep, so I recommend approving this, the chair design disagreement.
So you need a motion to approve chair and auditor signatures on the agreement. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike, to approve the HMA resurfacing agreement with Monmouth for Division Street and authorize the chair and auditor signature on the agreement. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Think I have anything else. Give you guys an update last week on the destination lights. They just, yeah, bases are installed, but nothing will happen now for a little bit till the poles come in. And I did mention Z thirty-four is gonna start right at the beginning of April, the overlay, the bridge approach work first.
And they're well aware of that, I was asked by a council member of Preston.
I can send them an email to let them know, because there will be, when they do the bridge approach work.
So that's the concern is around there.
Mm-hmm, it will close that road for, could be a couple of weeks by the time they tear out.
It's such a thing that we put a sign north there somewhere and say, you know, this is gonna be closed approximately from dot to dot to dot.
We don't have like a, like those LED-type signs, we don't have any of those. We don't have one to do that.
Clinton don't have one.
I don't think so.
Jones don't have one.
It's just a short.
You know what I mean, is that's a, that's a, that's a lengthy detour around that thing, you know, that's a, you know, you gotta go away, you got to go to Springfield. Whatever.
Yeah, it's more of a short term. I mean, it'd only be a couple of weeks. It's not like it's gonna be closed for.
Yeah, but they got the farmers.
I get it, but they get angry, you know, they get angry.
Well, and they can take any of the gravel, like, the local traffic can take a gravel road to cut across if they need.
Yeah, but you still gotta cross the river, some.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if you give an estimate somehow when the bridge might be closed, or get on KMAQ anyway and tell them.
I'm gonna say, do we have an estimate on Morgan Bridge?
Well, no, that's close. So far as.
So right now, they plan on starting April seventh. That is subject to change depending on weather. That could change a day before.
Are they starting south or north?
Well, they're gonna start at the bridge.
At the bridge.
So it will be closed right away.
They're gonna start at.
Oh, that's interesting.
Because it, the bridge approach is concrete work, not asphalt. So the bridge approach will be done before the asphalt overlay.
Okay, so, yeah, you are in tillage season and.
Make the school district aware.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be inconvenient, but gotta get the work done, so.
I hear you, but just so people know, yeah, because I would, you could get a spot on Just Talk or KMAQ.
Is that a question or a demand?
Strongest suggestion.
Yeah, I want to hear you.
Did you guys start reclaiming, because you were talking about trying to get it while there's some moisture in the ground?
Not yet, we haven't. So, oh, I should, I should talk to Rick this morning to see when his plan is. I know it's in the very near future. It's the time to get you up and go.
Yeah, no, these roads are looking good so far, and I don't know that we're gonna have a bunch of boils or soft spots. Yeah, I've talked to some guys that are digging, and there ain't a lot of products out there, love.
No, there's, there's not. There are little bit is there, you can usually dig through.
True, yeah. Well, good, yeah, I hear the graders are, maintainers are out anyway and doing their thing, and that's a positive.
Yes, spring is hopefully here.
Thanks, dude.
All right.
You heard that bridge work, once I started, it'd be about two weeks at its cost?
Approximately, it depends how long it takes them to tear out and put back. I don't see it taking any longer than that, but.
Weather and all that kind of stuff.
I would certainly let, like Don said, let the transportation director at Preston and Bill, you know.
I can, but we can put a notice on our county website, the homepage for.
In case you call over to KMAQ, tell them to announce that or something.
I'll send an email to the schools and.
For sure. So you put something on around the news time, because I bet that's when you're gonna get more.
Yeah.
Cool, yeah, I can do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next up, again, is there any visitors or citizens who would like to address the board this morning?
Yeah, I will.
Stand up, introduce yourselves, sir.
Ready, Rowan. Wife and I attended the zoning commission meeting a week ago last night, and just wanted to say that they, I think they made the right decision. It was unanimous decision with one abstention, and like I say, they were very professional about it, and I think they did their due diligence, and and we hope, I mean, if this goes through, you know, that it's not gonna happen, you know, was hoping that in the future, you know, there's ordinance or something that can get put in place or whatever, so someone down the road don't have to deal with it again. You know, as far as the distance from the house, I talked about the Bitcoin and the money deal. You know, if there could be an ordinance or something or whatever, that's, you know, I, I would hope for like fifteen hundred feet minimum, and maybe, maybe even up to a half a mile away, just because of the noise of those things.
There's certainly something we consider in all our ordinances, all our resolutions, that we consider everything that we can. We hope to get them right, and you know, like, as you well know, probably know, we spent, or Lori spent, and the commission spent a year and a half on the wind orders that we just passed. You know, we usually, that thing, that thing's all pretty good, I hope we get a.
You know, I know, we realize it all takes time, but just, yeah, that's, I just wanted to.
Well, thank you.
I'll see you, Ray.
Thank you very much, sir. Yep, anybody else like to address the board? There's nobody else, we'll move on to Jennifer Mishandee from Engle Insurance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ready to make some decisions today, right?
You are?
You are.
Talking your counterpart on Moyn last week.
Joe or Megan?
Megan.
Megan's joining us via Zoom.
Yeah.
She on?
Yep, she should be getting on here. She was gonna join at nine twenty, so am I a little early?
You all, did you guys have a chance to look at it?
I haven't looked at anything yet. At least it's not done yesterday, but I guess what I consider is, I'll do my best, but I got enough to eat, I mean. So. All back in your court.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know, again, we, we talked, we spoke a little bit out there, it wasn't really the environment to sit down and have a lengthy conversation about things, but.
Well, Megan and I have had multiple conversations, including Joe, and I just want to recap where we're at. So with cyber, you had a ten, or you had a two million dollar policy for ten months, which was roughly eleven thousand, three hundred dollars a year, okay? Basic math, two million into twelve months is fourteen thousand, four hundred. There's been rate increases since last year. Tokyo, looking at a two million dollar policy, same as last year, you're looking at fifteen thousand dollars, okay? ICAP offered you one million dollars worth of cyber coverage for six thousand, or two million, underwritten by Tokyo for fifteen thousand dollars. Thanks to Megan and I, working diligently and hard, we came up with a third option, which is CFC. We can do two million with CFC for nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty, which is a third party.
Well, welcome, Megan.
Megan, you're on.
Morning, Megan.
Hi, guys. Good morning.
Good morning. So she's, CFC, who, what is that company here?
So they're another company that writes cyber coverages. Sometimes we use them for cities and schools, things like that, and with Megan's help, we were able to secure a third quote for you. So for nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, you can do two mil, or you can do three mil for twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty. So that company has the most amount of coverage or the least amount of premium, if you're interested in going that way. And Megan, by the way, is the director of ICAP, so ICAP is her company. So back to conversations from last week and stuff like, I can't, I don't make these rates, Mike, but what I can do is offer the coverages for you guys to make the decision that you want to make forward with the county moving forward.
Megan assured me that she would get us a bargain.
What was that, I'm sorry?
He said you insured them that you would get them a bargain.
Well, we did, didn't we? We got, I know, Mike, I think my word was option. I never heard bargain. I think it was an option.
Thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. I will leave with you. One of the things that I want you to recognize with cyber, with all cyber, there is sub-limits involved in them, okay? So you just need to review the sub-limits, but I know you're also concerned about premiums. But we both write several other entities with.
So what's the major difference with CFC that makes it significantly more reasonable than the other two?
Go ahead, Megan, what do you think about that?
Can I chime in? I think you just have different sub-limits. There are, there are always differences, so we see a lot of variation in, in the way that things are what we call rated and priced. There are different sub-limits in the CFC quote than there would be in the ICAP quote. The other difference is that is a separate carrier, right? So the county is cutting a separate check to that carrier versus having it all rolled into your ICAP program, working with your claims team. You'll still work with your same, you know, local agent, your local representation. There's just some differences on the backend.
When you say sub-limits, you're talking about deductibles, you're talking about coverages for different things?
Coverages have a cap that they will only pay so much for that coverage, you know, or that particular type of claim. So every one of these carriers is different.
Yeah.
There's no way to put an apple in an apple in an apple. We got you.
I don't want to do, I know some car insurance, you know, to use kind of probably a poor example, some car insurance, but you name your price, you can go through and shop and pick whatever coverages you want. But they don't realize that, yeah, it might be a cheaper premium, but it leaves you exposed, because maybe it was this kind of hack versus this kind of hack or whatever. A phished email versus a cold call, you know, and the things that are more, probably more probable aren't covered. You know, so I, I don't know jack squat about this stuff to say, well, look at the sub-limits, see what you think. It could be written in, you know, Sanskrit for all, like, you know, for, so I'm asking, what are the significant differences? In a nutshell, I understand this could be a two-hour conversation, but in a nutshell, what are some of the differences that, or what would you recommend?
Well, so like she said, ICAP, you're gonna go straight to ICAP, you're going straight to Des Moines for your claims people, and they're gonna know those limits, and they're gonna know how to handle that claim the best. Tokyo and CFC is a third-party project, but we're gonna have to go inside that, and we have to have that two-hour conversation of naming out every one of those limits and figuring out the difference between Tokyo and CFC. They're all gonna have their own claims departments, they're all gonna have their own claim process. ICAP has their very, you know, you're familiar with that process, you're familiar with how to move forward with that. And we can certainly do that.
So, both, either Jennifer or Ken, you tell me, you've been in the business, can you see me, tell me like where the attacks are coming from or what, or, you know, what you're recommending? The three mil, I would assume. But can you tell me what's happening or what the settlements are or average or?
We've had that question come up a lot recently, Mike. We're working on some, some graphing, if you will, to kind of paint the picture specific to municipalities. I can tell you in terms of causes of loss, what's, what's happening. You obviously have your ransomware, which we all know about, but phishing is huge. Most of cyber-related claims stem from human error, very candidly. Someone clicks a link, someone accidentally replies, you know, your email address might look the same. In fact, they could, they can use the same email address right now, but have it set to go to a different account, and so that's where the claims are stemming from. When you, if I can go back to the previous question, and you talk about the difference, you know, it's hard, because I genuinely don't think there's a right and wrong. And that makes it difficult, because we want to, you know, well, this is the best-case scenario for the county, but at the end of the day, if something happens, I hope never, nothing ever happens. I hope you pay for it forever and never have a claim. But we all live in the world, we know that isn't likely, certainly not on, you know, in general. But when we talk about, you know, the cyber, it's gonna come down to what's the cause of loss. That's how you're gonna know what sub-limits are important, and unfortunately, you just won't know it until something happens. The one thing I will say that I take a lot of confidence in, the pool is different, because we are member-owned, we're governed by a local, now, local, you know, board of directors. There, we can't just cover everything. I'm sure you guys know that, you've been, you know, members for long enough, but we make a very concentrated effort to find coverage when, when there might be none. We work, we view ourselves as partner to, partners to you as the member and to the agent, so we'll work to find coverage when there is none. Hopefully, there is coverage. I think that the one difference I would want everyone to be aware of is these other two placements are standard market placements. And so that is going to be different. Either there is coverage, it's in, or there's not, and it's out. And there's not gonna be sort of that nimble response that we, as a pool, strive to provide. Again, I'm not gonna say that there's one that's right or wrong. It really just come down, comes down to what is the county's comfort level? And, and how, you know, where do you place your value, I guess, is what it is.
Normally, Megan, I guess, when I see these things, and if we get, have a lawsuit, or if we do something, we get this or that. If you have X amount of coverage, it's usually about what they come after, whatever coverage we have, if that makes sense, but.
It does.
It is. And, and even like back to last week, my job is to present you all of the options.
I get it.
I'm not telling you, you have to buy any of it. My job is to make sure that you're aware that it's available if you want to purchase it for the county.
The ICAP was fifteen thousand?
For two million dollars.
Two million, yeah.
Yeah.
And Tokyo was basically the same.
Fifteen or a little more for two mil, and the CFC for two mil is nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty.
And you said the two million dollar policy through ICAP was basically sub-written by Tokyo?
Yeah. Right, it's underwritten by Tokyo.
It's reinsured through Tokyo. It's written by the pool, so you'll follow the ICAP coverage document, but Tokyo in that instance serves as the reinsurer, so it goes up through the layers that way. If that, if, if, if you want to get into the weeds on it, that's how it works.
So we can go through Tokyo, go through ICAP, who's gonna go through Tokyo, or we can go through CFC?
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Those are the three options that I have available for you.
Uh, so again. The sub-limits are.
Yeah.
In these different.
So you would have your policy from Tokyo last year, that would explain all your sub-limits. I brought you fifty pages of each of the sub-limits for CFC. And again, like.
If I read the first two paragraphs, unless you tell me what's, what's your recommendation is, to me, what you're telling me, the three million and twelve thousand, it's a much better bargain than what we were getting last year or the prior year, again, or whatever our limits may be, I don't know how we can be self-insured on something to that effect. Do you see a lot of counties in these things? I mean, what, what do we have they want? Other than shopping as owner or whatever, you see agents. Unless they shut us down at every rate.
Now, you got employees, yeah, yeah. And I don't know, I'll give you an example of a claim. This, this is, we have a manufacturer who, they started, they were using like their Gmail account to communicate with the customer, right? The vendor manufacturer actually was hacked. The PO or the purchase order came in as done to me as a purchase order, and also said, I need you to review these invoices and approve them, right? The person sitting on this side of the desk, it came from Don Schwanker, it was normal process, the invoice looked the same, everything clicks it, opens it, approves it, and money started going out the door to a foreign country in a matter of like twenty minutes before IT even knew what was going on.
I get it, but then again, I, I'm gonna go back to individual responsibility on this, because it's a five-minute phone call. I mean, we all read about Duke County here for a year, and they're still in process, so. Half a million dollar goes out the door, and nobody knows where it's at, I get it. But again, there's some, there's some responsibility involved here, you know.
Sure, a hundred percent. So that's what I have for the cyber side of things from our last week follow-up.
And, and if I may add on, to, I, I, I didn't see who made the comment, but there's some responsibility there. That would be the position your carrier would probably take, right? If you go to standard market, there, there would be, that would be the position that they'd take. At the end of the day, there's still an error and a loss to the county, though, is what we would want to ins- ensure, hope to ensure, to the best of our abilities, that you have coverage. Because the reality is, I mean, you know, you know better than me how many employees you have, and people do make those mistakes.
My two senses is the amount of emails that we get on a given day. And you know what? How many, I think last week you talked about sixty or seventy people.
Yeah. There was.
So I'm just saying.
Okay, so I'm gonna say seventy percent of them you can go and delete before you even look at them.
Here's the problem, though.
You might, somebody else might not.
The problem is, is because of Iowa law that says that we get FOIA requests, and there was a request that came in, and it. And there was a request that came in and it came in under my spam account. And it was a bona fide request for information. We have ten days to respond. How do you know?
Yeah.
That's the problem. So yes, you're absolutely right. There is a responsibility. But then you know what? Every email that I get, should I delete?
No, ask Björn.
Well, you know, but you don't understand, I mean.
If you go back to the Dubuque example, they could have very well followed the exact chi, you know, policies and procedures. It was just they got duped by a fake account and, and, you know, so.
And they're very good at it.
You know, so that.
Yeah, they're way smarter than we are.
To me, the comfort level is, do you want to go on a standard market where you're, you know, you got a cheaper rate? Or do you want to go with the comfort? You know, with the ICAP, you know?
Yeah, she understands her, her customers. She understands where you're at.
You know?
One, one thing I would draw attention to because I, I hear the Dubuque example, which I understand, and I understand it's close to home. That's one of those things that also, now, not in this, I'm not talking about this specific claim. But when you look at the cause of loss on that, it falls under the, the social engineering umbrella. I would just, if that's, if that is a potential scenario of concern, you're looking at the sublimits for social engineering in your different quotes. I would recommend you look and compare and say, right, which one has a limit we're most comfortable with? Just, just something to consider. I know you, I know not every sub limited item will resonate, but that's the one I would suggest looking at. If the, if that scenario is one you're concerned with.
Well, that's, that's one of the, we bring it up because that's one of the few we know about.
Sure.
You know, so whether you call that social engineering or you call that cyber crime, I, I don't, I don't know what all the sublimits mean and stuff. You know, this is relatively new and you give us the encyclopedia of Sanskrit terminology or whatever, you know, to understand that's going to take a year or two to, to kind of make it, that's where I'm deferring to what I'm going to call the subject matter experts to say, we think this best fits your market. Maybe it's the cheapest, maybe it isn't, but we think this best is what you're looking at. These are the options. We recommend this one because of ABC or whatever. So, you know, or we get the packet and we don't make a decision today and.
I'll be honest, same like Don says, you know, you, you, you come with acronym, you come with sublimities. I, I feel like it'd do me no good to read them, but I'm going to go back to these guys that use it every day, to Lee, Jim Björn and whoever. You know, and your professional opinion to say, well, I'd get the most bang for my buck if I do this, I, you know? I don't know if I'm looking at that, right?
Yeah, I mean.
I don't care who ensures it. I'll be honest, I don't care who gets their cut out of it, but I just want to be protected for the best. Again, bang for my buck. I don't know.
Right. Cheaper ain't always better, but again, we don't know what, you know? It'd be like me trying to talk medical terms to you, you know? You're not going to understand them if you haven't been in the medical field sometimes. So you talking insurance terms, yeah, I understand like car insurance terms, but I don't understand cyber because I don't understand the damn computer to start with.
And we need to know all the control factors as well, so that we can help look at that bracket, that packet that way too. So like we've talked before, other entities have MIF every day. So how does that fit into the equation of the conversation inside the policy?
See, I don't know what that is.
There you go. Okay.
So.
That's what I thought.
You know, if we need to make an appointment to sit down and work through them with you, because you're, you know, if that's the case, then you're the expert actually in the room about what it is that they need. Because you'll know what the controls are and when the opportunity is for the, the, the loss to.
Where are we most vulnerable?
Yeah. I don't know that. I only know products.
People clicking on the wrong email. Multi-factor, is that going to solve that?
But would you like to read through here to see what the other scenarios and situations are beyond that? I mean, that would help you probably get some insight into what that opportunity is.
Let me just, yesterday I received an email and I, I don't know if you were in on that or not, but I did receive an email and they wondered to know how many records we're talking about. I said, it's undetermined. And this was my response. I said, we have an undetermined amount of records. The sheriff's office has paper and electronic files with fingerprints and records from inmates. A lot of people don't think about that. The recorder's office has paper files or books of death, birth and marriage records. The treasure and recorder both have a credit card machine that is used daily, of which I would have no idea of the number of transactions done. The human resource department has paper and electronic records of all current and past employees. So we don't, we have a lot of information. We have a lot of records here, both paper and electronic. And so we have, there's no way we can ever say how many records we have. It's, it's very undetermined, but you have to understand, this is the, this is the width of, of, of what we're dealing with. And again, you have sixty to seventy users.
Because to me, those two people right now, there need to be the most comfortable with our policy because Björn's going to be dealing with the hack and you're going to be dealing with the insurance side if and when there is a claim and all that kind of stuff.
We do our best to train our employees, but again, you're one.
I know, we never will know. And, and you know, again, I, if we're going to look at this and you're, you're through three, three or four different, three scenarios out there. So again, if we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck, I would, I would, I would approve that, I guess. Do you still want to look at?
If you're, whatever you're comfortable with, but I mean, it wouldn't be bad to look at it at least to make sure like we don't have to have this requirement in here to have this coverage.
Okay, so.
They requiring us to have MFA for every single user?
Megan, on yours, you do not require MFA for every single user, correct?
Uh, we would, there's no requirement. I would recommend it. I would also note that in the ICAP cyber, you have some sub limited items because the county doesn't have MFA. Now, there's going to be sublimits. I know, I know we keep saying that. We can increase some of those sublimits from one hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand if the company, if the county implements MFA across the board. We would recommend it regardless because I think it's relatively low cost compared to the level of protection you get. But I do understand that that's just another thing for the county to have to, to do and consider and work through. But I would encourage it for increasing of those sublimits if the option is there.
And I saw that same sub limit in the CFC when I was just browsing. It said a hundred thousand was covered with a five thousand dollar deductible if not every employee had MFA.
Okay, so.
If they don't have multi-factor thing, max applies a hundred thousand regardless of the loss. If they have MFA, we can increase it.
Now you go to three million dollars because you, you met the requirement outside.
Well, that, you're talking about CFC?
Yeah.
I don't know because that's a separate carrier. I can't actually speak to that sub limit would increase.
How about yours?
On ICAP's coverage, there are four items that are sub limited at one hundred thousand that if you implemented an MFA would increase to two hundred and fifty thousand. It would increase at no additional cost to the county. It's just that they're sub limited because there's an increased risk based on the lack of, of MFA right now.
So can we do this? And we put a scenario together, like you threw some, three different policies at me for different amounts that I tried to write down, but I can't read my own writing. So can you put a scenario together for this, what is colored, covered? And like the three options that you give us and include the MSA and the CFC and the NBA and the CBS, whatever you got there?
But all of these are probably fifty page policies and I can give you all three policies.
What I would like, I would like you to talk to those two and come back next week with a recommendation. And we can say, this is what we're going to vote on. If you want one of us to be there, absolutely. But when you're talking, you know, to me, the possibility of a hundred fifty thousand dollar risk on a social networking or whatever, because we're, we're exposed because we don't have the multi-factor authentication. If that's like a, a hundred dollar piece of equipment or a fifty dollar, whatever little scam thing or fingerprint thing that we can buy that'll not expose us to an extra hundred fifty thousand dollar risk, that is something we need to do. You weigh those things and okay, we go with this policy because of this and we can get the, you know?
Absolutely.
You know?
I, I just need to know when their time and their schedule is available. Probably need about two hours would be my guess.
Okay.
We, we, I have a, I have a starter comparison that I can provide. It's not going to be specific to your policies, but we can modify it and I think that that will help streamline the conversation as well.
I think there's only, you know, from what I'm hearing, there's only nine or 10 line items that would be considered included in it. I mean, you could take all of it. And the NBA wasn't really included. That was a joke. And CBS.
I thought you were saying NBA, no disclosure agreement.
So while we got Megan though, we have to do topic number two, which is the excess liability. Did you decide that you wanted to leave excess liability the way it was or did you want to increase your limit of liability?
I think, I thought we did that already. The twenty, didn't we do that to twenty five?
You said you wanted to leave it as is and it was tabled in our last conversation. Don wanted a week to decide. You said to leave it as is and then decided to table it.
Did we agree on the twenty five thousand deductible? That was where we saved the twelve?
This is the excess liability.
Okay. Oh, this is the.
Increase in the excess liability. Did you want to do that or did you want to leave it as is? And again, the conversation is.
So then we were looking at, at the three million limit of coverage for thirty three, seven, seventy five. Correct?
Yep. And, and you have a whole list of limits that you can increase too.
Right.
Those recommendation was that you went to the higher, the, you know, the bottom one to give you all of that excess liability?
So to give us thirteen or give us thirteen million in coverage for an extra thirty three thousand seven hundred and seventy five, that's what I have in my notes.
Correct.
Current liability. Coverage. Again.
Your general liability, be on the front.
For two mil. But you're rolling, you're rolling the dice either way you do it.
Explain that again. So our general liability is two mil.
Yeah.
The excess liability.
Is down below.
So you, you exhaust, you exhaust off, like in a claim scenario, you're going to use that general liability limit first, right?
Right.
Then the next limit that comes into play is that excess liability. And then if you want a bigger excess liability limit, there's all those limits below.
So is this three million more or a million more?
Think, think, think of them as stacking. So while it's split out, two million is your first layer. And then am I correct that there's three million on the excess, Jennifer? Okay, so we're looking at five million in summary. Per occurrence. So ICAP does not have an annual aggregate.
Yeah, exactly. Gotcha. Yep, yep. And, and Mike, I did ask Megan and she said you had an interesting idea, but it does not work that way. You can't stack one million, one million, one million. That's a great idea, but that's not how it works.
We'll do a twenties for less money, Megan.
I, I, I do really like the idea. I don't think it's going to work out.
Get it to the board or something.
Yeah.
And that was for the five, for the five billion.
No, no, that's for the excess liability.
I know we're talking about that, but it was cheaper to get the million and million, you know?
And so was this. Mike had pointed out that it was cheaper to do it this way here too. And we'll present it again next year. I mean, we are going to present the excess liability every year here.
It is, it's a, it's a roll of the dice. That's what it is.
If you don't need it, spend it less would be great, but if you need it, that's where in trouble if we didn't.
I guess, um, think about even like from your homeowner's perspective or your own personal umbrellas. What did, you know, and you're thinking about it from the county level, who?
Yeah, but I carry a hundred, another million for a hundred and fifty bucks. I'm not looking at six thousand.
But your exposures are a lot less than your county's.
See the garage? We got to make a decision. Do we want, or do we want to keep the table till next week? And then we absolutely make a decision.
Uh, well, like Jennifer says, you wanted another week to look at it. You want another week?
Well, ICAP was in the way or ISAC or whatever, you know, we were going.
So you were saying you didn't really look at it over.
That's right.
And we, we, we discussed that we have time.
Well, Megan reminded me that we, we're on a short limit of time. Underwriting is eventually going to start telling us that we're, you know, chewing up our time. We've, we've had this out in front of Vietnam for three weeks, so we've got to make some decisions. Because eventually we'll have to have something for underwriting to complete this process.
So our original is eighty seven thousand at two, I, I don't, two million, two million, correct?
I have written down.
Eighty seven thousand, eighty seven nine.
Okay, so we could get another.
We pay an extra, we pay an extra thirty three thousand for the three million. Right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
So if we got rid of the extra three, three million, save that thirty three thousand and went to the thirteen, that would increase it to forty seven, which would be an additional thirteen thousand dollars. We get an extra 10 million in coverage.
Yes.
What? Is that your motion?
So, yes.
We got a motion.
All right.
Good.
Do we have a second?
So your motion was to take the excess liability, the thirteen million for the, for the cost of forty seven, four eighty one?
Yes.
Getting rid of the thirty three thousand for the three million, taking that up above.
Yep. But not to say that we have to take any of them.
No. What her motion was, I understand it, above, you got the two million for eighty seven.
Right, that's, that's what we have.
Then you go down to the three million, up, 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 where you say, right there, that thirty three thousand, get rid of that and replace it with the thirteen.
Do we have the, the extra three million right now?
Yes.
Yes. That's what you currently have. Yes.
That's what we're paying, thirty three. And if we get rid of that, it just make it thirteen for an extra thirteen thousand dollars, you get an extra 10 million. For a total coverage of fifteen million dollars exposure.
Yes. Yes, correct.
You think a minute, Mike. I just want to make sure what you're saying, your motion, there's thirteen million dollars of excess excess liability coverage for forty seven thousand four hundred and eighty one dollars.
And we can do that in lieu of the three million dollar, thirty three thousand, right?
Be replacing the.
Yes.
Give us an extra 10 million in coverage that you currently have.
On the liability, on the liability lines.
On the excess liability line. Yeah.
Yep. It's, it's one of those things. I, I would say this. Now, Mike, Mike knows my family. We're not cheap. We're frugal. We're notoriously frugal. And I, so I'm not flippant at all when I talk about additional expenditures, especially not for the membership, right? But when you, when you look at cost benefit, of course, I hope you never have to use it, but for that additional contribution amount, if you do have a claim, that coverage, where you are right now is in, and you, if you look at claim trends, right, every, I just saw a fifty million dollar settlement for a spilled hot tea. I don't know if anyone saw that. It was in the news yesterday.
Uber driver.
There's this almost desensitization towards settlement amount. So if you have a claim that goes in excess of five million dollars right now, it goes above it, the county's on the hook. If you increase this, this excess limit, you have that coverage up to that fifteen million. When you do cost benefit, again, I'm not flippant at the additional cost, but for the expansion of coverage, that increased limit, it, it's, it, it, that increased contribution is exhausted in less than half of a, half of a claim realistically.
I completely agree with you for the cost of the, like you said, it's a no brainer if you decide you want to do that. I, I, I want to go way back to get to what I said before. If I have an excess li- limit of thirteen million, that's what they're going to come after. I don't care if they spilled their coffee or hit, hit my bridge, you know? I, I don't know.
I will step out of the chair and second the motion. Do we have any other discussion?
And I, I kind of agree with you, Mike, on that whole, they're going to come after whatever your top limit is. But I think people are also going to compare to, okay, you know, as we see in other areas, there's, you know, case studies out there that. this lady from McDonald's got this much for spilling hot coffee, while now this person that spilled hot tea is gonna go for that much and more, because that was five years ago, or ten years ago, so I think we need to kind of stay in that. You know, as things go on and people get things brought to court that I don't even think should be allowed to go to court, but that's here nor there.
So there's a motion by Nan, second by me, to increase the excess liability coverage from three million to thirteen million for the total cost being forty-seven, four eighty-one, twenty-two.
Don't vote yet, 'cause you need to untable the motion.
Oh.
You need to untable first.
I'll make a motion to untable.
Withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion.
All right, then make a motion.
I'll make a motion to untable our ICAP liability, excess liability coverage from last week.
One second.
We got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to untable the decision for ICAP uh excess liability coverage. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is unta- or the, motion is untabled, now.
Now, at this point, I would like to make a motion that we increase our excess liability coverage to.
From three million to thirteen million.
Yeah, from the three million of the excess liability to the thirteen million of the excess liability.
We're a premium of forty-seven, four eighty-one, twenty-two. Is there a second? I'll step out of the chair and make a second. Any other discussion, I'll reassume the chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Those were the three, the two things I have for today.
See you next week.
See you next week.
With one thing.
With one thing, we're, we're moving on.
Thanks, Megan.
I'm just gonna leave these in um. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you much.
Thank you, have a wonderful day, folks.
You bet.
You too, Megan.
Next up we have is Ruth.
Hi, go quickly. Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, so in our office this last uh month, we had thirty-five in-person visits from veterans and family members. Um, fifty-three phone calls, we filed um five intent files, so those are claims that we will be working on with our benefit, these are just mine, I don't find this.
You didn't print that wrong, right?
No, sorry.
That's my.
Um, we did five disability claims, um, one supplemental claim, one higher level review, one survivor's pension, the healthcare forms. Um, sixteen decisions were made in January, and we have sixty-seven open claims. Um, so one thing we're finding in our office, as we start to look into people's files, is we have um veterans whose um information has not been worked on since like twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-two, it's just kind of not in our system, but in the Veterans Affairs system, it just kind of disappeared and got lost, yeah, so as we find those things, we are um reaching out. Anything that we can make, or can we reopen this, what happened, you know, kind of things, um, so it takes some time as we're digging through things. So I encourage any veteran whose claim has been open over a year or two years, please call us if, if you haven't received any information from the VA, I'd like to, we'd like to. Um, we have four hundred and eighteen veterans and eligible family members receiving seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars um in benefits in January. That is down from December, uh, four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. And the article this uh month in the Coca Sentinel Press, I wrote about women veterans, 'cause it was Women's History Month, and we don't have a lot of women veterans, but we like to have them come in our office, um notoriously, they don't use their benefits the same way that um that male veterans do, the VA's been trying to understand why, so we're trying to help, you know, encourage people to come in. Um, I spoke at the Optimist Club on March twelfth. Um, I attended the Tri-State Veterans Network meeting in Dubuque on March thirteenth, mainly to push our July third um movie that we're going to have, so I wanted to get um information out to people who might come to the community for that. Uh, we do have some upcoming events and office hour changes this week. So March twentieth um is the Bloomingwood Health Senior Wellness Expo at the McCoqueta Y from ten to twelve, so we will have representatives there. Um, our office will be open that day, nine-thirty to four-thirty, but we'll also have representatives at the Y. Then, we also have March twenty-first, our office will be closed due to the District Two meeting, so the District Two meeting will be held in Dubuque March twenty-first, so we're all gonna head, head up there and um go to that meeting. And then, spring school is held April fifteenth through the seventeenth, and our office will also be closed during that time, 'cause we'll be in Des Moines attending spring school. That's all I have for you, sir.
Any questions for Ruth?
Nope, we just ask our veterans and take advantage of the benefits that they should be getting, so.
Yeah, yeah, please, please stop.
Hear it from anybody, let's talk to Ruth.
Exactly, we appreciate everything you're doing, keep it up.
Thank you for having me today.
Ms. Lori, you're up.
I like following Ruth, she kind of sets the tone, sugar and spice and everything nice, so.
What do you got, thunderclouds and all kinds of stuff?
No, I'm gonna follow, I'm gonna follow her lead. So, um last Monday, the zoning commission met, so that was March tenth. And um besides the work session for the zoning ordinance rewrite, we also had a case that had been tabled in the February meeting, and they brought it, untabled it, to bring it back up. And that was for the data mining operation where the spray found. Um, the commission determined that the best type of use for the per- that, that the proposed use was actually M-one, and that um the area there north of Spragueville was not conducive to rezone to M-one. So for those reasons, they recommend the board supervisor keep the zone A-one and deny the application for any special exception use.
I would make a motion to approve the zoning commission decision on case twenty-five dash zero one.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve the uh recommending the zoning commission's uh decision on case twenty-five dash oh one. Um, recommending keeping it A-one. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now, on this, seeing that we initially had a moratorium on this.
Yes, sir.
And it looked like there's a couple of companies that were going with long setbacks and all that kind of stuff, we lifted the moratorium. Now we have other people coming in with different ideas. Can we reestablish a moratorium on future projects until we establish maybe setbacks? And maybe how these things can be confined into more of a building setting, which I think the unit, the, the first rounds, we're all going to be building a, a building kind of thing. Is that something we can do?
Actually, I think the, that your energy was also gonna use the pods, like.
I thought they were talking about building buildings and.
I think there's either pods, they might have been the concrete ones, but I think they were also pods of some sort.
Am I mistaken? I thought they were talking about.
I, I could be way off base.
I think we discussed that previous ones that they looked at, when one was in a hoop building, which I think uh now is destroyed, but then I also think that uh I don't know about the building, they talk about selling the land to them, though, or, or whatever it was.
Yeah, 'cause the one out there's um used to miles.
I did hear at the state state level last week that a lot of counties are gonna require a foundation under them in some sort of building, if, if they do go to that. Um, I also heard from someone that they're maybe going to a different type of cooling system, more of like a radiator system that was much quieter, that, that, which I, I don't know, proven and unproven.
I did talk to one, I did talk to one guy, he said that some of the counties are also thinking about, you can't there's no advantage, there's no benefit to having these here, because they don't produce taxes, they don't, but counties are going to, are looking at a franchise fee off a percentage of productivity or whatever, as a possibility, so there is some kind of at least revenue.
Then I, I think Nan had mentioned out there also, they talked to someone, and I don't know where it was for sure, and I'm not gonna say. But uh their manufacturing plant was coming in, but they couldn't, they couldn't, because they had these um data mining things, and they could have enough power to.
Was that Harden? I was, I know you had talked to him.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. I apologize.
Nope.
But, yeah, it was just, you know, they were, they had a major company looking at possibly trying to come in, and it was gonna be a long drawn-out process, because they didn't have enough energy with where they were at, so, because of them using that up, so.
Okay, 'cause typically, what's the R E C just purchase more from boss to co to send?
But that all takes time, and sometimes these companies are wanting to, you know, know that they can get in here and get going, and, you know, if R E C's gotta do another substation, and what's the lead time on them getting all of their equipment that they need to put up another substation and get more power and stuff like that, so that was.
Example we can use is the industrial park south of town. Until the hospital moved in, the biggest drawback to the industrial park was it was shovel-ready except for electricity, and half of it was M M U to the west. And, well, a third of it was M M U, a third of it was McCoqueta Valley. McCoqueta Valley needed to bring a wire underneath sixty-one to feed that area, and it needed a separate substation. And they said the, the turnaround on that was about a year to a year and a half. Most companies don't wanna wait that long, they, they said they could come up like a temporary power, but they weren't gonna bore and do all that for uh maybe someday, they wanted concrete, but it was hard to get to concrete, because nobody wanted to commit without, with the power for a year and a half, so now that there's a substation there, it cut down that significantly, so.
So it boils down to us moving forward, or what we're gonna do here, and we still have the option that if every case goes, just from clear, every case goes before the board first, or commission first, and then comes to us.
And the board of adjustments, too, doesn't it?
Yeah, I need to do some more looking on different things, but I we, I believe we're, we're in good shape, either board adjustment, and then there might be some options for you guys to make um recommendations, but.
At least, at least distance, I mean, there's gotta be a few parameters that we can put in place, because, again, you know, and I think about it, depending on the building and stuff, there's one just across the street. Nobody says anything about it.
Right.
But when you get out, you're talking boxes and fans and all that kind of stuff, um, we all need to play along, we all need to get along.
I mean, we talked about this too, and Dom brought it up several times, you know, fire suppression, and within the window orders, maybe fire suppression, detection, whatever it may be, we need to be protected here, you know?
Yeah. Um.
I mean, we're protecting the public is what we're doing, that's.
I agree, I agree. Um, so I believe you guys do have the option of placing another moratorium, or going, or just keeping it like it is, and going through the special exception use. Um, through the, you know, determine the use of the operation.
I guess my recommendations, what do we need to do going forward to set a few minimum parameters? Does it need to be an ordinance, where we talk about, you know, fifteen hundred feet, two thousand feet, you know?
We.
You know, type of thing, so.
We can, that would be something that we would be doing, and that, so we have a choice to make. And someone had mentioned, do you really want an ordinance for data mining? And their reasoning was, this, the conditional use, the way we have it set up, you can, you know, look at each area, is, 'cause they're all unique, instead of having a blanket on it. Um, you know, you can, but, I know, you look at Rowan's, there's six hundred and seventy-five feet from where the nearest pod would be set. There's another one, substation down in Monmouth Township, um, south, due, due south of Monmouth, and the closest house is like two hundred and something. And then there's another one with less than a thousand.
Do we have a rural noise ordinance?
We do not.
Maybe that's a route we start looking at.
Well, I'm just looking, is there something, does the zoning commission want any assistance from the supervisors, or is there something we could do to make their job easier? Again, not so much just banning all of it, but just setting.
There might be, there might be a place for it, but again, sitting on top of somebody's house, I do not think is the place for this.
Absolutely not.
You know?
So here's a suggestion, maybe take it back to your commission and ask them to consider this, talk it over. I think we should wait till this session of legislation is over also. Um, with what Doc Chatter was, you know, I, I don't know what's coming down the pipe, but I, I would guess we, we're, we're safe to say that it's gotta go in front of the commission person and Jake Coby.
Right now, yep, until, unless there's.
We're gonna move forward, we'll have to talk about it.
We have a placeholder in place in our ordinance rewrite for these type of operations.
Okay.
Um, yeah, there is, there is a placeholder for them, so, um.
Or is there something in there that we, we could adjust in certain way? Come up with some recommendations if you guys think they need it.
Okay, um, the next time we're gonna meet is um April with the zoning commission.
Okay.
And uh we'll go forward, but, but then again, you guys wanna put a moratorium in place until there's a ordinance developed, or until they decide for sure you just wanna do it by a special exception, that is falls in your court.
I'm good right now.
Okay.
You?
Okay.
You?
I would maybe like to do a moratorium.
On future projects, understanding that we lifted it so some could progress. You know?
Right.
I would say, you know, but going forward, just to see what the, to me.
I mean, even if we did just a three months or a six month to kind of make sure we're
And now that we.
At a good spot.
And now that we have the wind ordinance in place, we should bring up language to lift the moratorium on wind, because we have the ordinance in place.
Oh. Is, or was that an automatic?
It expires the end of June.
Yeah, and let, I think there might be language in it, let's double check.
Okay.
The, unless there's.
Do we need to, because we put it in via resolution, do we need to have another resolution to inactivate it, or that's, that's my question.
Something that's gonna sunset, though. You know, you have an ordinance in place.
I'll have, I'll, we can check, we'll look at it.
Yeah, check it.
We'll check it out.
They can let us.
Well, we'll look at it, it might tell it, it might spell it out itself.
Go ahead.
So, but if not, we will definitely get legal advice.
So we can't do a moratorium today if we want it anyhow, because it's not.
Not on there, but I would say, do one up, see what you, and then we can look at it.
Okay, do you want me to wait till after the, the meeting with the, the zoning commission, or, or do it now?
When is your meeting, and what, April, what part of April?
Just like the third week.
It is, it's the twenty-third.
That's a month.
Doesn't matter to me, I, I still think we're protected, but that's entirely up to.
Yeah, 'cause you saw how this action turned out.
We, we can't take action until next week anyway, so if you wanna put it back on the agenda, we'll put it back on the agenda.
We'll decide then.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Lori.
Yep, see you guys.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Have a good day.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, as written by Audrey Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
So low.
Second.
We got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, as written by Audrey Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to uh accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission many, meeting minutes for February nineteen, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All but a half of the board today.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you, who's the land?
Morning, Wayne.
Morning.
All right, calendar for this week. Five o'clock this afternoon is Conservation Board Meeting at Hurstville for any of you. Also at five o'clock this evening, it's a Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting, um, here in McCoqueta, or by Zoom for Don. And at seven o'clock is a Board of Health meeting, um, for Nan in the committee room by Zoom. Uh, Wednesday, March nineteenth, from twelve thirty to two thirty, um, St. Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services, they're going to meet with their new A S O, uh, that's in Davenport, that'll be Jack and possibly Nan. From one to four tomorrow is an E C I A strategic planning meeting in Dubuque by Zoom for Mike. And at five o'clock is regular E C I A council meeting in Dubuque by Zoom for Mike. Thursday, March twentieth, at eleven A M is a Jackson County Area Tourism Association by Zoom for Mike. And at six o'clock that evening is Limestone Gloves R C and D by Zoom for Don.
And at six o'clock that evening is Limestone Bluffs R C and D by Zoom for Don. On Friday, Mike has, um, an E C I A Executive Director's Search Committee meeting, um, in Dubuque. Um, I will be out of the office that day. Monday, March twenty-fourth at four P M is Early Childhood Iowa Council Meeting in Tewitt for Nan. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-fifth at nine A M. That evening at five o'clock is the McCocon River Watershed Management Authority Board Meeting, the one in Monticello. Um, for Don or for any of you actually that want to attend that.
I'm not A S O, are you going to that a little? Because I think Jack's going to be up in Dubuque for E C I A. He's going to be up at E C I A at one o'clock, so.
I do think Lori said it won't be the only meeting with the A S O, Lori Elam said it won't be the only meeting.
On Wednesday, I don't know, Jack will maybe be up there till four. Well, he might be there for the strategic.
He told me last night he was going to be up there all day, he said I have to do that, uh,
Yeah.
Rotary, because that was actually this, this Thursday, this, this Wednesday.
This Wednesday. Okay.
Most fun, you two want to go to Rotary because I went there last time, so.
Rotary, darling.
Anyway, back to, back to Y M.
Okay, um, the business today, I received a letter, it's in your package from the Preston Library. Um, it had a resignation, um, in the library board from Ellen, I believe it's Seacor. I need to, motion to accept her resignation with regrets.
Abode.
Okay.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve the, or accept the resignation letter of Ellen Seacor from the Preston Public Library. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then I'm looking for a, a approval of their appointment, um, to fill that vacancy. Um, Erica Williams is, um, who they appointed to take her place, we need to take Ellen's place and we just need to approve that appointment.
I'll make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve Erica Williams to the Preston Library Board to fill the vacancy of, uh, Ellen Seacor. Any other discussion?
Just thank them for their volunteer to be appointed.
Thank you, exactly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's on the feed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then the, uh, next we got is boards and commissions.
Um, you know, of course, we were all out in Des Moines last week and there's probably just some discussion to be had, be had, but that's probably for another day.
I would say it was probably one of the more productive ones I've been through, there was a lot of active conversation about a lot of different topics and really kind of feeling more connected with things that are going on, whether you understand it or agree with it or not. Um, uh, McCocon Water Management, the, the River, McCocon River Water Management Authority, we did get a three-year agreement approved to work with Limestone Bluffs and, uh, as our fiscal agent, everything's going good with that, their cover crop initiative, they're getting ready to, uh, um, kick off again, last year was the first year of it, they're getting good traction, they expect to have a lot more this year. Um, again, their, uh, annual banquet is next Tuesday, um, at five P, well, six o'clock is when they kind of do everything and they'll have a big presentation and then they'll have a meeting the same time, but everybody's welcome to that and together we build last night. Um, they just about got a full year under their belt, um, they approved a logo last night to kind of put on the front of the the front of the, the building to kind of brand it going forward, so things are kind of falling in place. They got some people there this week trying to figure out the lock situation, I think we need to talk to them a little bit because they got they have problems and solutions and all that at the same time, but I don't think they talk, um, or communicate quite a bit, so. Um, the door seals are being looked at, a few things are getting, um, so you might want to touch base because there's somebody there always trying to help figure it out, so. That's all we got with that.
I really don't have too much, I, um, did get in touch just recently with John Keys about the fairground lease. Um, so we're still working on that part of it, other than that, I really didn't have any.
I just have one question for the board, is that the lease for Waste Authority is up, it's actually overdue?
You guys been talking about that?
Um. So what do you mean the lease?
We have a lease between Jackson County, because we own the land.
Yeah.
To Waste Authority and.
Okay, I know Frank's been sick and he was in the hospital somewhat for a while, yeah. So I guess we need to touch base, somebody needs to touch base when, uh, so it comes up.
He's aware of it.
Yeah, okay.
He's working with us, us aware, but we weren't aware of it.
Yeah.
And so Frank said something about getting it.
Oh, we need to put it on our calendar then, I don't know, what do they, what was the last term?
Thirty years.
Oh, whoa, we only got to do it every thirty years. That ain't so hard.
Yeah.
It's pretty obvious we need a transfer station, are we talking about the old landfill or no, not, I mean, of course, he maintains the gases and whatnot and the type thing on the old landfill too, if you call it.
It's a very old lease and we probably need, just need to have John look at it.
Yeah, I agree.
And again, maybe it doesn't need to be a thirty-year lease because it gets forgotten.
Right.
Yes, yeah, I, I, but it's, yeah, obviously if it needs changing, yeah, it should be looked at, we, we are.
So unfortunately, this means that we have to look at another lease, the Historical Society, the Fairgrounds now.
There we go.
Authority, so.
It would be expert at leases, pretty soon.
Yes, so, we'll make sure that we'll send, uh, we'll send everybody a copy so you can take a look at it. We can help them move forward.
Yes, I think in our package is this letter from Preston, from the City of Preston Police Chief Mayor and City Administrator encouraging us looking at a levy for dispatch, so.
Extended conversation out in Des Moines. And they're talking about legislation of putting them two together. And they're also talking about legislation for a levy as a per capita, pretty strongly. So I don't know where it's at, we'll wait and see within the next ninety days.
I don't know how you do a per capita, right?
I'm not going to argue that point.
I know, but it's, it's all going on property taxes and.
You can't do per capita if it's going on property taxes.
Well, I don't, you can't just send people a bill either.
The only you can do.
It could be a waste of management levy.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion, so.
I mean, there's discussion on essential services, there's discussion on, yeah.
So, a lot of discussion. Anything else for the board?
Make a motion adjourned.
Second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.